All right, I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four. This is our second budget work session, and I believe Mrs. McCourt has a presentation for us before we begin.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Governor's budget came out last week, so hopefully we have some updates.
We do, we do. So let's start with the budget priorities. Again, those priorities are transportation with a two million dollar increase, negotiations to support the ESMIC ESP contract, the Blueprint Career Ladder, and the sixty thousand dollars starting salary, as well as a minimum compensation of sixteen dollars an hour for support staff, as well as the SMAA, last year of their four-year contract, which reflects a step and two percent COLA. We've earmarked eight million dollars to cover the cost of the negotiations, and then four million dollars for health insurance to cover the cost of the anticipated minimum ten percent increase for fiscal twenty twenty five. Again, we will not be receiving those numbers, the exact healthcare premium cost for next fiscal year until the end of February or beginning of March. So unfortunately, it will be after you have submitted your budget to the county commissioners. These three priority areas do total fourteen million dollars. As we presented at your last meeting, the fourteen million dollar ask would be coming from the county commissioners for a total of one hundred and forty-one point three million dollar request. No planned use of fund balance for the school district, however, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars included for the charter school plan use of fund balance. One hundred and forty-two point two million dollars in state revenues, or a decrease of one point one million dollars was anticipated from the state at that time, and we'll discuss some updates in just a moment. Two point six million dollars in federal and two point four million dollars in other revenue sources for a total recommended budget of two hundred and eighty-nine point one million dollars, or an overall increase of eight point five million dollars. The decrease in the revenues again were as a result of the declining enrollment, decrease in farms applicants, as well as a decrease in allocation for transitional supplemental instruction and a blueprint transition grant, and all of that compounded by the increase in county wealth. Just yesterday, the county commissioners received a budget update from the county's CFO, which reflected an increase in the taxable assessment for St. Mary's County of twenty-five point four percent, which exceeded the state average of twenty-two percent. So that leads us to the state aid update. The governor's budget was released last Wednesday. We received late Friday evening an update from MSD on the state revenues, and the total number for St. Mary's County is one hundred and forty-three point four million dollars, and actually, an increase of a hundred and two thousand dollars in lieu of that anticipated decrease of one point one million dollars. So that is positive. Unfortunately, it reflects a zero percent increase. It is within ninety-nine point, I think, two percent of what are projected numbers. The information before you, I provided you some additional documents, and the very first sheet is a detailed look of all of the revenue changes as compared to what was originally presented. And in fact, if I can point out a couple of things on this sheet. The compensatory ed dollar amount was originally projected at twenty-four point seven million dollars. It came in at twenty-four point eight million dollars, a slight increase of sixty-five thousand dollars over what we projected. The transition grant, which is account five-two-one-one, came in exactly as we projected. And the supplemental, transitional supplemental instruction grant, five-two-oh-eight is the account number, came in just under what was projected of forty-nine thousand seven twenty-six. So overall, one point two million dollars greater than what we had originally projected. What that means is then we can reduce the county ask by that dollar amount. Therefore, that becomes a twelve point seven million dollar ask of the county instead of fourteen million dollars. However, we don't stop there. We did go back and look at our current year's year-end projection, particularly understanding that there will be budgetary savings with regard to our salary accounts. We have identified approximately three point two million dollars of budgetary savings, and it is the recommendation of the superintendent that we go ahead and incorporate that three point two million dollars into your budget proposal as a planned use of fund balance to cover the areas of bus driver retention of one point two million dollars, as well as OPEB costs of two million dollars.
And, and let's be very clear that, so we find ourselves, we're about halfway through this school year. The first, the first semester ends at the end of this week, so this is a good midpoint. We've looked at how all of the expenses are coming in. We recognize that we are going to have some, it's been, it's going to be some, some energy cost savings. There's going to be some fuel savings. And more importantly, because we are trying to best position ourselves for placing all of the ESAR-funded positions, we are really examining every vacancy as it comes open, and we're trying to fill it with somebody from a grant-funded sunsetting position. So we believe we are, we are going to have lap salary savings that will afford us the ability to take these two items out of our ask for the county commissioners. Now, these are recurring items. The bus driver retention that we've done for the last several years, it is fully our intention to continue to move forward with this, but we do believe that we will have lap salary savings and other cost savings enough to cover that cost for next year. So we'll take that out. The OPEB contribution, which every single year you need to be making a contribution, and a two million dollar contribution to OPEB is by no means what we should be funding our OPEB at. The county commissioners, they're fully funded their OPEB, they're good to go. In fact, they, they never have to worry about that, but because we're a much larger organization with three times the employees and a much slower funding of it, that is a recurring cost, but we're going to pull that out and cover it with fund balance. That means that we can not only really reduce the, the ask to the county commissioners of the additional state funding that's coming in, but we will also reduce it by three point two million dollars in the anticipation of us being able to use our fund balance at the end of the year.
Therefore, that would reduce the request to the county commissioners from the original fourteen million dollars to nine point five million dollars, or an overall ask to them of one hundred and thirty-six point nine million dollars. Again, this does not change the bottom line of your budget. The bottom line of your expenditure budget remains at two hundred and eighty-nine point one million dollars, an increase overall of eight point five million dollars, or three percent.
Now, please understand, this is the, this is what we're proposing to you. You, we want to hear from you, because these are recurring, we are taking recur, we are breaking a cardinal rule that we have, and we are taking recurring, recurring costs and paying for them using fund balance. But we feel pretty confident that the fund balance will be there, and that this is the best way to address the ask that's going over to the county commissioners, because we heard them loud and clear yesterday that because of the actions taken over the last, I don't know, twenty years, where we have systematically reduced the property tax in St. Mary's County. Twenty years ago, it was ninety pennies for every one hundred dollars worth of appraised value. We have lowered it over the two decades to be eighty-four point seven pennies per one hundred dollars. The, the property, the piggyback income tax that has been three percent was raised to three point one seven percent, and then lowered now to three percent. In addition to the homestead tax credit, which Ms. Cudmore reflected on the fact that when it was introduced in the nineteen nineties, it was ten percent cap, but the county has made the decision to lower that from ten percent down to whatever, down to five, down to three percent. All of these decisions have now got the county, even though we are a wealthy county and your property's worth more than it's ever been, and the incomes are pretty darn decent in the county. They're looking at a very modest projection of additional revenue for next year. They went back and forth on it, but I think it's about five or six million dollars total, if they don't change anything. So the county is staring at a whole lists of requests from everybody. We're no different than all the sheriffs, the corrections, the county employees. We heard from all the fire chiefs, everybody saying we don't have enough with our current budget to make do. And the county commissioners are looking at their revenue projections and saying we, we may only, we may only have five or six million dollars worth of new revenue coming in to the county unless they do something different.
In fact, their request, as they presented yesterday, to include our fourteen million dollars would total twenty-one point one million dollars, and new monies needed.
And that's before they consider compensation for their employees. They did a, they did a, a study, and the study came back unsurprised, unsurprisingly to everybody who understands how salaries are working in the state of Maryland, and specifically in our tri-county area, to say that the county employees are making anywhere from seven to eleven percent on average less than neighboring counties, and in some positions, up to eighteen percent. That does not come as news to us, because we know for a fact, it's very easy, we don't need, we don't need to pay fifty thousand dollars to have a consultant come in and take a look at all, we can compare apples to apples to our neighbors. And we know that our teacher's starting salary is less than both of our neighbors and all the neighboring areas. We know that our supporting services staff, their salaries are less than the neighbors, and it is about a six to seven percent differential, no matter where you look. So the county commissioners, to send over a fourteen million dollar ask, recognizing what they were faced with yesterday, it, it's, it's an unrealistic request, and it certainly can't, I, I can't find a way for it to be honored. So we went back, Ms. McCourt, all of her staff, we went back and tried to figure out what we could do so that the request going over to them is aligned to the other requests that are going to them. And specifically, three different fire chiefs came forward and made the request they want to go to public hearing to raise the fire tax for Ridge, Leonard Town.
Mechanics.
And Mechanicsville. They, they want to have a public hearing to raise the fire tax to five point six pennies on a hundred dollars worth of assessed value to make, to make their budgets work. So there's a whole conversation about that. Do you realize if the county commissioners took five point six pennies and put it back into the property tax, which is what it was twenty years ago? Twenty years ago, if you owned a home, ninety pennies went to the county for every one hundred dollars of, of appraised value. That's enough money to basically meet our request. At, at one point five million dollars per penny added to income, to property tax would net out.
Eight point six million dollars.
Eight point six million dollars. So really, we want to line up rate with the fire departments and say, you know, you've got a fire tax, fire tax, fire tax. We have, let's call it the blueprint tax, because that's really what it would be. Eight point five million dollars is enough to actually implement what we're talking about to get to the starting salary of sixty thousand dollars and all the other stuff. The slide that you see before you is not our slide, is not our calculation. This slide was presented by Jeanette Cudmore to really provide a perspective for the county commissioners to see just what our neighbors are doing. And our neighbors are also saying that they don't have enough money either. But our neighbors, if you, if you look to Calvert, the property tax is ninety-two point seven pennies per one hundred dollars. And if we were at the Calvert rate, we would have an extra twelve point one million dollars worth of, of revenue. If we were Charles, and Charles, oh my gosh, it's one dollar and fourteen pennies per one hundred dollars worth of appraised value, we'd have forty-five million dollars more. And if you split the difference, and you just go to Prince George's County, which is one dollar for every one hundred dollars worth of appraised value, we would net out twenty-three million dollars. And then she went down to the bottom and said, right now, we have a three percent piggyback income tax. If we were to go to three point one, we'd net out three point seven million dollars. If we go to three point five, we would net out five point six million dollars. And if we went to three point two, we could net out seven point five million dollars. One might ask, you know, what would have happened if we would have kept it at three point one seven, which is where they put it four years ago? We'd probably be in a different space today. They also talked about what the actual cost would be back, if you can go back, what the cost would be to the homeowner. And this is kind of confusing, because they put the fire tax and the emergency services and all those other things in there. But what Leonard Town particularly presented, and probably in the most straightforward way, is that five point six pennies of increased, an increase to the property tax equates to two hundred and twenty-two dollars on a four hundred thousand dollar home. So if you raise the property tax by five point six pennies, the, the owner of a four hundred thousand dollar home will see their taxes go up two hundred and twenty dollars per year, or, you know, approximately twenty, twenty dollars a month or five dollars a week. If the, down below, they do the income tax, at three point two percent, the average income of a hundred thousand dollar person would be a hundred and seventy-three dollars more per, per year. And that, of course, is then spread out. I don't know how much people really notice that incremental increase to your, to your piggyback tax, but that, that basically nets that out. So I applaud Ms. Cudmore for bringing this forward. I think that it's worth having a conversation. I know that everybody feels very strongly that we shouldn't raise taxes, and that we can't raise taxes, and that we aren't going to raise taxes. But if we don't do something different, we are going to definitely have to modify the community in which we live. We were going to have to modify public education, we're going to have to modify law enforcement, we're going to have to modify corrections, we're going to have to modify county government. We're going to have to really look at what we value most in, in this, in St. Mary's County. So it was a really, it was, I think it was a, I think it, it was one of the most upfront January budget work sessions I've ever attended. And I think it sets the stage for, I think, really compelling conversations going forward throughout the, throughout the spring and bringing it to the public. Everybody is feeling the same way that the school system is. We don't have enough money to meet the expectation of our community. And we can either find a way to get the money, or we need to modify the expectations of our community. Because I can tell you right now, in my experience, our community expects a high-quality educational system that provides for all students and provides a well-rounded opportunity to succeed. So great conversations, really interesting information. Please note that we went back and have sharpened our pencils. And what bef, what before you is how we are trying to make the most appropriate budget request go across the street to the commissioners so that they can enter into a discussion about what their priorities are.
But still, make no mistake, even with this nine million dollar revised request.
Nine point five.
Nine point five. It's still going to alter the way our school system looks next year, based on what is already been, what has already been removed from this budget.
Right, no matter, I mean.
Right, so, so it's not as if like, oh, you, you know, let's raise taxes, and then everything's going to be status quo, working the same way, because it's not, right?
No matter what we're.
We're removing the freshman academies, we're removing the, the dual enrollment in, in the high schools. So it's still not going to look the same as it looks right now.
So I would go back to dual, the freshman academies, the, the money, the, it was ESAR money that, that we used to stand up the ESAR, the freshman academies. They are incredibly successful at our schools. Those teachers, counselors, administrative support, wraparound, social, emotional, it's been, it's been fantastic for those kids. It is, it will be our job to figure out how to continue the best elements of that. That is, that is the world of work. And no matter what, the ninety-plus positions and those, those are all, we had a really great, last night, we had a synergy session with ESMIC, and all the representatives from every single one of the schools, we gathered over at the ESMIC offices to talk about the funding, how funding comes into the system, our budget, our budget request, five-two-thirty-four, that's the, that's the statute that says seventy-five-twenty-five, and talk about how we're handling the sunset of, of all these grant, grant-funded positions. It was a really good conversation. We're doing a whole bunch of work to tighten belts, to try to get to the right position, because we do recognize that, that, that it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough sell, that people need to pay more for education.
Right.
And.
It still will not look the same as it does this year.
I just go, I just go back to, you know, we've seen everything, we've seen everything escalate in cost ridiculously over the last three years. Why would education be any different? And then I, I will go back to, everybody who says that the blueprint is this, is this waterfall of money, I say, not in St. Mary's, because it's zero percent. They set a high bar of expectation, and they're providing a zero percent increase over the previous year, which is better than we thought, but it's still zero percent.
Or look at the governor's budget, and K through twelve funding was decreased by three percent.
According to the, according to his budget and brief, when we look at it, it's three percent. Now, when you go deeper, they say that they're fully funding and doing all this other thing. But overall, the amount that's going to K twelve is three percent less than it was the previous year. You know, these are, these are really, these are really, these are really tough.
All the way in the way you spin it.
These are, well, yeah, I mean, whoever has the microphone gets to tell the story, right? So the last slide is, this is also from Ms. Cudmore, and this is talking about the homestead tax credit. And the, the three percent, what that, what that, what that saves or what that costs the county, and what it would be if they raised it to four percent or five percent, and then all the way, they didn't put it all the way to ten percent, but, but, you know. So again, if you live in St. Mary's County, and your home is your principal residence, your taxes, your property taxes can only go up three percent.
Regardless of what your home is assessed.
Your home could be worth four times what it was the previous year.
Correct.
Your, the taxes you pay can only go up three percent. Now, that is if you have gone online and you've done your, done the things to get, to get the homestead tax credit. If you don't go and do it, your taxes can only go up ten percent. That is the cap in this, in the state of Maryland. So when people say, my taxes went up twenty-five percent, they didn't, they didn't. The value of your home from the last time it was appraised, it is now worth twenty-five, twenty-eight, whatever percent more. But if you did your part, and you've applied for the homestead tax credit in, in St. Mary's County, your bill can only go up three percent. That is incredible, that is an incredible benefit to live in St. Mary's County. This is one of the lowest homestead tax credits in the state. We are fourth lowest in the state for property tax. It, this is a great place to own and live. But that comes with a cost, in that revenues are suppressed, and as the value of your home goes up, the state gives us less money. Because Ms. Cudmore was calling it flexibility, right? You can, having lower taxes, you have the flexibility to raise tax. Across the state, that's called capacity, right? When the state looks at it, they say, you have the capacity to generate enough revenue to cover all the anticipated costs of things. But the state doesn't force you, it's a local, it's a local decision. So the fact that we are, that this is out publicly to discuss, I think that that's, that's a, that's a great benefit for all of us to really understand what we're, what we're talking about. I have had to listen to people for the last four years, talk about the fact that the blueprint is going to bankrupt us, the blueprint is going to be responsible for taxes being raised. We actually raised taxes in St. Mary's County in response to the anticipated cost of the blueprint, and then we lowered them. At a certain point, if you want to invest in education, you are probably going to have to look at where you're going to get that revenue. And you're going to have to make hard decisions as to this or that. The budget you see before you is our response to everything, all the information that we have to date. I will tell you that the only other thing that's not included in this presentation, but did come out last week and was shared with the rep assembly, was the AIB's step toward providing guidance with statute five-two-thirty-four, saying seventy-five-twenty-five percent, the money has to follow the children. Last week on Thursday, they had a, they had like a little memo, that they recognized that they had no idea, really, what this data looks like. They, they kind of made up the seventy-five-twenty-five, it's just a convenient number, not based on anything. Somebody said, I don't know, seventy-five sounds good. So they are going to, we assume, they haven't put it formally in guidance yet, that twenty-twenty-five will be a hold harmless, which means we're all going to have to do all the work to generate, to figure it all out. We are all going to have to publish all that work, but they won't consequence a school system if seventy-five percent by category wasn't spent at each one of the schools in the upcoming year. What that means for St. Mary's County is that we will make no staffing decision based on employee compensation level, meaning that we aren't going to move veteran teachers to other schools to make the seventy-five-twenty-five work. We have a, we have a year moratorium for that. We will be relentless in pursuing a reconsideration of, of that. It's not only that it's seventy-five-twenty-five following the child, it's that they're not, the blueprint is not increasing foundation funding formula, and the foundation portion of our funding is where we get all of our teacher salaries from. That's where we get, that's where we get, that's the meat of our, of, of our operating cost, right, is in foundation funding. The foundation portion for the, for a child isn't going up quickly enough. Categories for special ed, ELL, and economically disadvantaged children is basically a multiplier, one, two, three, four of the foundation. I think they, they need to go back and take a look at all of that. They really need to go back and now look at their. They really need to go back and now, look at their numbers to see whether their original numbers from five years ago, pre-pandemic, were actually the right numbers, based on actuals as they see them today. We were told all along that the blueprint was going to be a living document. I need to see some people breathe some life into it and really consider whether or not the intent is being carried out by the actual. So, it is, all of our advocacy has at least resulted in a small consideration, which is hold harmless for 2025. So, and I believe that that may be forthcoming in the next month or two, but that's at least, we've taken that off of our table and off of our consideration. Because I did hear a lot of questions about that at the synergy session last night from the reps. They were concerned that we were going to make decisions moving people based solely on their salary. And we will not be doing that for next year. All right, so that is our presentation to date. That's the budget that you see before you. We have staff here to answer any questions you may have.
So, Timmy, if you go back to the last slide with the nine-point-five-million-dollar ask, keep going. Like, yeah, all right, so what, so, and we have all these documents here.
Yes.
So now, based on the nine-and-a-half-million-dollar ask of the county commissioners, what happens incrementally if we do not receive that full amount?
So, what we'll, and we were talking a little bit about this, the essential cost changes that are going across the street, right? So, when we originally discussed this, we were talking about the fact that we would be sending out three essential cost changes. One for transportation, one for compensation, and one for healthcare.
Right.
With the way we've got this framed now, we believe we will cover our healthcare costs internally. And we don't know, we project them to be ten percent. If they come in higher, we're going to have to go back through and figure that out. But as of right now, I believe that the ECCs, as they would go across to the county commissioners, are going to be compensation for our ISMC, and ISMC ESP, and SMAS, that compensation. And then another ECC for the increase to the bus driver contractor PVA increases and all those others. So, they'll be looking at two ECCs that are all relegated to compensation for staff.
Okay, so then, I think what I, at least I would like to see, and this is also going back to the meeting that you and I had with Commissioner President Guy and Mike Hewitt prior to Christmas, is that if, whatever, because in their comments were, you know, "We're going to give you a bucket of money," based, you know, whatever, and then you spend it as you need to. So, throughout my tenure here, the priority has always been taking care of people, which is obviously the main driver of our quote-unquote "business." So, if those are going to be the two ECCs that go across, and if we don't get fully funded on that, then, rather than wiping out those ECCs, right, then we're going to have to pull the money from somewhere else within this document.
Yep.
So that's what I want to know, like, so if we're only funded at seven and if we are successful in negotiating a contract, right, with ISMC.
What would we have to do?
What would we have to do, because I certainly don't want to have everyone who's spending all this time on, you know, negotiations, to then say, "Oh, sorry, we're not getting our nine-and-a-half-million dollars." So, it's all for naught. So, that's what I would like to see be, like, what, and I know that's not going to go over to the county commissioners, but just for us to make the decision based on how things
Right.
go across the street as they move through their budget, what, in order to hold up that nine-and-a-half, what is on the table within this document?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
What would we have to do if we were indeed flat-funded?
Right.
Yeah. We can bring, we can bring.
We have been brainstorming.
We've, there are.
Like, I want like the Plan C, B.
Yeah.
I want the Plan B and C budget is what I want, because, you know, we've always held fast that we're going to honor, you know, our people, right? So, I just need to know what is that going to have, you know, what's the trade-off?
Right.
Which is a very poor choice of words, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the big thing is recognizing that we are in negotiations and if we do get to a point where we settle and we have a multi-year contract, we're obligated to make every effort to uphold that contract. And even if we got to the point where we weren't able to, because we didn't have the money, we still just go back into negotiations to figure out what to do, you know, what else we can do. So, at a certain point, we will be picking apart multiple things within the budget. And then, the other thing to recognize is, the blueprint requirement for a sixty-thousand-dollar starting salary is not going away.
Correct, right.
So, if this year, you've, we know you're going to get flat, that's going to be the way it is, that obligation does not go away. And we've been talking about this since they implemented, since the very first time somebody said, "Teachers are going to make sixty-thousand dollars to start," we've been like, "Yeah, that's, yes." Keep in mind, when they started that, our teachers were making forty-eight thousand dollars a year to start. So, we were like, "Wow, that's going to cost a certain amount of money to get there." No one has ever said, "Great, here's the twenty-million dollars that that's going to take to get to it." And no one's backing off of that, so it is a requirement. But more important than that, other systems who are finding an easier way to funding than we are are already there or are going to be there next year.
Right.
Charles County will be at sixty-thousand dollars as a starting salary next year, done deal. Calvert, I don't know what's going to happen in Calvert, but Calvert right now, as of January one, their starting salary went to fifty-five-something. All the other larger systems are at sixty or will be at sixty next year. So, we, you know, this money needs to be invested in children. And if you don't make the investment this year, it will compound and there will be all kinds of pain to pay for it. It'll compound and it comes back next year, the year after that, the year after that. And in the meantime, you have suffered through hardships and lost people to other systems that perhaps are able to better compensate. So, we're trying to make the most appropriate request, and then there are multiple avenues to get there.
Well, I guess it would also be interesting, if we are flat-funded for 2025, then how does that impact our ask for 2026?
Right.
Because it's going to go up.
It'll just be compounded.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I guess that would, not that, I kind of just need that number in my head.
Yeah, well, and the one thing that we've been talking about is that in the event that we find ourselves in a negotiated agreement for multiple years, right? And this has been the whole, this is why it used to be, the county commissioners were completely supportive of a negotiated multi-year agreement for the simple fact that it lays out exactly how much we're going to have to need to increase the budget each year to meet the negotiated agreement. That's always been the benefit. And this year, we're in limbo, because we don't have a negotiated agreement. But, once we get to a negotiated agreement, we will know exactly what that amount is going to be for the following three years after that, which we can absolutely plan for, work for, and be able to present to the county commissioners, this is exactly how much we're going to need each year. The one thing that everybody needs to get through their head is that this idea that there is such a thing as maintenance of effort and that anything can cost the same amount year after year after year after year. And that is what the state of Maryland has had for the last twenty-some years since Thornton came in. They had this maintenance of effort. And maintenance of effort has got to be the stupidest thing I have ever heard, because the underlying assumption is that everything costs the same each year. And if that's the case, I want to go, I want to move there. I want to move there, because I've never, everything costs more every single year.
What do you mean, it costs more month-to-month?
It can cost more day-to-day.
Right.
The fuel costs going up twenty cents, that'll consume a heck of a lot more than two-hundred-and-twenty dollars over the course of a year. We're just really challenged. We're trying to put forth the very, the most appropriate request, but recognize that money that we need to implement the blueprint, to have a career ladder, to have a starting salary of sixty-thousand dollars, that number is not going to change. And this is the most modest way to start it.
And I just don't want to leave anyone anywhere with the impression that this will, this nine-and-a-half-million A will, I mean, it's going to keep everything running, right? But at the same time, whatever we have that is funded under that nine-and-a-half million, then what it is going to impact, right?
What do we take away?
You are all rainbows and unicorns, and you're very positive, and I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm going to steep us, put us back down in the numbers.
I would disagree, last night at the synergy session, I don't know that anybody would refer to me as rainbows and unicorns.
So, but you know, I mean, but that's what I'm saying. I think we just have to make sure that we understand, because the decision is going to have to be quick and it's going to have, because when they come back in April or whatever, we're probably going to have exactly two weeks, if even that, to revise and then send it back.
Yeah.
So, any work or information we can have beforehand, I think, even is better for both us and the public.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I got a question on the fund balance.
Yep.
It's a semantics, but you said you had a savings of three-point-two million.
No.
It's not really a savings, right? We're using our own money to reduce the request.
That's correct, we're anticipating.
So it's not a savings per se, that's my opinion. But my question is, too, the fund balance of the county.
Right.
What I've been reading, admittedly, in the last year or two, they've got, they had an enormous fund balance. How are they explaining not using that to help fund the school system?
You know, again, you can get, whenever you start talking about fund balances, there are amounts of money that roll over year over year. And there's assigned fund balances, there's unassigned fund balances, there's encumbered funds. The biggest is, what is the unassigned fund balance of any organization? Which means it's just money that you are carrying forward without an identified purpose. Aside from, like, we carry six-point-six-million dollars, we carry it every single year, year over year. They call it fund balance, but it's not, it's our healthcare call. It's the money that we set aside in the event that we have not projected appropriately or have escalating healthcare costs outside of the projected realm. We have to have that money, because at the end of the year, CareFirst doesn't care what your deal is, you have to pay your medical bills, right? So, the unassigned fund balance of the county commissioners, and keep in mind that they also have, their assigned fund balances, things, fifteen percent of, they hold fifteen percent of all their money just so that they can have a, for bond rating purposes. So it doesn't, so that, it doesn't do anything, it's just, it's sitting there for bond rating purposes. When you start to get to, you know, a three-hundred-million-dollar annual revenue, fifteen percent, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, forty-five million dollars, that's a lot of money that's just sitting there so that you can have the best bond rating. That's something for the county commissioners to really talk about. The biggest thing with fund balance is, you should never use fund balance for recurring costs. And what we're going to do here is, we are going to use our anticipated monies at the end of this year for recurring costs, the bus driver incentive and the OPEB payment. But those are also two things that, the OPEB payment, we could, you know, those are things that we should do every single year, but in the event that we ever got to be super tight and we couldn't make it, we could forego, although that is an unpaid bill that escalates over time and, you know, it's, you know, that's one of the challenges. We're putting forth, early on in the budget cycle, that we take these two things off because we believe we'd be able to handle them internally.
We would never put forth a recommendation to use fund balance for recurring costs of salaries or utilities or health insurance.
Right. But the two that we've had, we feel confident, we feel more comfortable with that than, say.
So, we can't make the argument to the county commissioners that they got a big piggy bank and they need to draw it on, is that what you're telling me?
No, I mean, the only thing, so, you know.
They can't use their fund balance either to fund recurring costs.
Right.
So that's why when we go to them and ask for a request that they determine they're going to pay out a fund balance, it's for things like a textbook adoption.
Technology.
Technology, like.
Security enhancement.
Securities enhancements, hardening, things such as that, yeah. And that's all, I would push that all over to the annual CIP discussions that we have for the entire county. Fund balance should be looked at that. And actually, by locally funding or forward-funding jobs and not having to go out and go to the bond market and pull down bonds, you could be saving recurring costs because you're not taking out a loan, you're paying for it directly. And the challenge is that it used to be, money was free. For twenty years in the United States, money has been, for all intents and purposes, free. If you have a mortgage that's less than three percent, that money's pretty darn close to being free. And now, we see all of the interest rates going up and that absolutely impacts bottom-line people who are done bond rating, we've got loans out, we've got all of these things. Money now is starting to actually cost something. That's, I mean, it's a, the discussions that we are having are very complex and require a great deal of measure and thoughtfulness. The same thing with the county commissioners. They are working, they're responding to all those different groups and they have capital costs, and they have, like, the presentation yesterday with Metcom. I mean, I was, George Erickson was talking about so many different things and going through all of these things and we're talking, and, I mean, I applaud the commissioners for being so on point and being able to follow all that. That is exceptionally complex work. You know, we can only know intimately what we're intimately working with, and that's our budget. And we feel pretty confident about what we're rolling across the street. We will definitely, when we come forward next week, we will show what a maintenance-of-effort budget would look like. And then we would show some of the larger things that we could consider stopping doing to get to where we need to be for employees, to see what that would be. If we were flat-funded and we honor whatever agreement we come to, what would we have to forego to be able to meet that? And I will tell you, it's a sobering look. We are, we are a lean and mean school system. And although we haven't seen the per-pupil allocations.
I've been looking for it.
Well, nobody, no one's preparing it, because everybody's afraid to actually put it out there. Because what it will show is the people who squawk the most are usually the people that are getting the most money. But we are, we deliver some of the very best service for the most cost-efficient price. We are going to be, you know, right around twenty, like, in the twentieth place for funding, when you look at state, local, and federal funding put together. Because although individually, they might not look, whatever, when you put them all together and you add up the total, we spend less per child than the majority of counties in the state of Maryland. And some counties spend a substantial amount more than us.
We're constantly engaging in conversations with the county government about cost efficiencies and how we can partner, such as the Eversites Center that will be up and running in a few months, or the CareFirst RFP, that was a partnership with the two of us.
Yeah, I mean, we really are, we're really trying, you know, obviously, salary and benefits are the largest driver of our costs. And so, to the extent to which we can manage, especially benefits, to be the best benefit for the best buck, that's what we've always done. And that's what Ms. McCourt and her staff have really leaned into. Hopefully, Everside, once it gets established and running, that might be something that really helps defray at least a percentage of the incremental increase to healthcare. That's, we're doing it for two reasons. We're doing it because it's good for our employees, but we're also doing it because in the long run, it could be good for our bottom line. Teachers need to make sixty-thousand dollars a year to start.
By 2026.
That's that, by 2026.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I thought so.
Yeah, and if, but if all of our neighbors have already gotten to sixty thousand dollars, we won't be drawing people down here. Um, teachers deserve to make sixty thousand dollars a year. And I've never come, I have not come across one person that said, no, that's too much. All right, I, nobody, nobody's ever said that. Well, what's going across the street is a nine point five million dollar ask to, to get to us, to get to that. And I hope that, uh, that, that's, you know, if you say you're for education, then you, then this is, this is a component part of compensating the people who are doing the most important work. Uh, as I finished with the RAs last night with, with ESMIC, their representatives from each one of the schools, um, education cannot be viewed as an expense. Education is an investment and you can choose not to invest in it. You can absolutely choose not to invest in it. You can devalue it, you can choose not to participate in it and then go the path that you're on. But our kids deserve the very best start that they can and that comes from a good investment in education. It costs a fraction to educate as to what it costs to remediate and or incarcerate. So, we got it down to nine point five. I hope that, that, I hope people across the street realize that we've done, we've definitely sharpened pencils and reduced their request by four point five million dollars. That's pretty substantial before it goes across the street.
So with that, at next week's meeting, you are scheduled to take, um, action to approve the recommended budget to go across the street to the county commissioners. Um, is there, are there any additional questions of the board with regard to this budget that you'd like to have addressed either now or at next week's meeting?
And we, we have staff here to talk specifically about anything.
I think we should do it now. Um, I just, so at the public hearing last week, we had several parents from the charter school that came up asking about their funding. Um, I, I see nothing in the budget that is, that is reducing their funding.
No.
Maybe if there could be some clarification around that because, um,
Yeah.
it, it was, there, there's some.
Disconnect.
There's some disconnect somewhere, so.
Well, again, five two thirty-four says that seventy-five percent of the funding needs to go to the schools. So, uh, if that is to be the case, then the charter school would receive seventy-five percent of all the available funding delivered to the school, both state and locally, based on their student demographics. So they've received the base foundation amount for all their kids and then an incremental increase for all ELL, economically disadvantaged and special education students. If we are to follow the letter of the law, we would then net out less than what is currently being provided to the charter school.
And that is contained within this budget?
In this budget, it is the charter school's budget from last year rolled right into it. We are not applying the rules of five two thirty-four to funding in this budget. The budget for the charter school is basically a, a, a.
Level funding.
Level funding from, from the, from the year before.
Alright.
They are also in the renewal process and part of the renewal process is the, is taking a look at the formula for all these calculations that will be coming forward to you in the, in the spring. Um, we're, we're working with them on this. So the, the people coming out early to talk about, you know, cuts to the charter school, that's, that's just a bit premature. And that's also looking at, um, what's happening in Baltimore City. Because Baltimore City has a lot of charter schools and when you apply five two thirty-four to them, the charter schools, several of the charter schools have said that it's an unsustainable budget. Which, which again goes back to where did they get the seventy-five, twenty-five split? How did they work it all out? How did they figure out what the, what the differential was going to be for foundation kids, for EL kid? You know, like, where did they come up with those numbers? Or did they just kind of?
Pull it out of the air.
Toss a dart?
Right.
And, um, I, you know, these are all, these are all things that everybody else is going to figure out. Um, we love our charter school. It's a fantastic place to, uh, learn and the parents and the children love the charter school. The teachers there are committed absolutely to their mission and the delivery of, of services. I was just down there talking to their, um, their student government group. Um, they're, it's, they're great. And so just like everything else, we need to be thoughtful and measured and that's why what you see in this budget is not five two thirty-four. What you see in this budget is last year's just rolled over.
Okay, anyone else? Dorothy, you had some questions?
I, um, so what was the increase for, for the health last year percent? Was it eleven?
So, so slow up here. Let's give us a tab and where you're looking. That might help.
Oh, well, we were talking about it.
Going into FY twenty-four?
Yes, what was that increase? Do you remember off the top of your head?
Was it seven percent?
Oh, it was almost, okay. I thought it was eleven.
I don't recall off the top of my head, but I can get that information for you.
Okay, okay.
Do you recall? Okay.
And then the other one would have been on one twenty-nine, but we talked about it with, like, how much is the fund balance for the, what's in there now for health insurance?
Yeah, six, six point six million dollars is set aside as the health insurance call, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it held steady for a while and then we increased it after COVID in anticipation of increased claims because individuals couldn't get to doctors during, during shutdown.
And Mrs. Dorothy, if you go back and look at our December presentation, we broke out the exact components of the remaining fund balance.
Yeah, yeah. It came up and it just.
But for, for health insurance from the two thousand and three, all of it together was fifty-nine million dollars under fixed charges and then this year it's sixty-three point three million dollars. So, anybody want to do the math on that? I think you're pretty darn close with seven percent.
That number just sticks out in my head.
I, I do believe that you're right, Mrs. Allen, it's seven point three percent. I just wanted to go back and confirm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And at the end of the year, we had a call, so, you know.
The end of FY twenty-three, we had a call. And at this point, uh, we are tracking that we may have a call again this year.
Which is why we believe that a ten percent estimate is probably.
Although historically, we had projected a five percent increase. Um, the current fiscal year was, has been the highest, um, increase that we've recognized in, in ages.
But everybody also predicted this, right? Because when we went into the pandemic, people didn't see the doctor. They didn't see the dentist, they didn't see the optometrist. Everybody kind of hunkered down and many people engaged in less than healthy habits of eating and, and I'm not saying any, I, I cast no stone. I definitely still have my COVID twenty, right? So, thanks. Um, but everybody projected that when we came out of it, we were going to see healthcare costs escalating as more and more people got back on track with all of their visits and their visits resulted in the need for, you know, more, more service.
And all of the procedures, all of the elective procedures that were, um, deferred, that couldn't be done during COVID, um, those, the need for those didn't change. So, once it opened back up, those procedures happened.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not unsurprising and maybe, and maybe we'll get a delight, maybe, maybe Care First will come in and surprise us all, but I haven't, I haven't found.
Seen it.
The greatest surprise I've had so far is that the state budget, they didn't cut us, we got zero percent. Like, the fact that I'm happy about the fact that they're giving us zero, it's better than, it's better than less, right? So, um, yeah, that's, that's, I mean, that's where we are with that.
I, I don't have any questions.
I don't know, Dorothy, do you have anything else?
Good.
Is Fairlead, is Fairlead and, um, the Virtual Academy, are there funds?
As of right now, that, as of right now, that's, that, we are, we are making, we are making modifications to the Virtual Academy and working with staff to best align and be efficient. And with Fairlead Academy, we've had discussions about that. But ultimately, it would, when we, the, then if we don't get fully funded, that's when we're going to have to have conversations about all these different programs. As of right now, what's in front of you is maintenance of all the current programming and, and positions outside of restricted fund positions in Essar and Leeds and pre-K expansion grants, which are going away. So, anybody who's followed along in the past, we've, you know, we, we start with here and then we whittle away and we get to, we get to where we are at the, at the, at the end. So what's before you in the budget maintains all of the current programming that we have within our schools.
Within the unrestricted fund.
Within the unrestricted fund, yes.
Now, does Fairlead and the Virtual Academy, do they participate in the Maryland Report Card? The assessment testing? Because when I went to the website, I was just reviewing all, most of the schools.
So they are considered programs and not schools. So all of the students who attend Fairlead are still recorded back to their home high school. All of the children who are in Virtual Academy are recorded back to their home high school. Because their, their requirements are the same as if they were in the home high school. They have to take the same courses, the same sequence, they have to take all the same county assessments, all the same state assessments. All of their data gets reported back to the county, but they're not considered standalone schools. We did not code them as, as, as such, because the kids actually have a tendency to kind of come and go. You can go into the Virtual Academy for, for a year and then you can come back in. Uh, Fairlead Academy, you could go there and then come back to your home school. And we also encourage all of our Virtual Academy students and our, and our Fairlead Academy, they can be part of the programming at their home high school as well, extracurricularly, athletically, um, intermurally. Uh, so they are actually then members of their home high school as well as being participants in the programming of Virtual Academy or Fairlead Academy.
And the same is the case for the Career and Tech Center. So although we're budgeting separately, although they're reporting.
All the children, all the students attending are coded back to their home high school.
And so they miss day, when they are assessed like that, do they miss the school's time at the tech center in?
So they, so, so, so a tech, so a tech center's student is scheduled for a portion of the day in their home high school, then they get on a bus, they go to the tech center and they, they go to their programming, two to three periods, depending upon where they are in their structure, then they go back to their home high school.
No, for the assessment test.
This, all the, all the, yeah.
The MCAT test?
All the, that's all done at their home.
At their home, okay, so they're actually in the schools.
Yes, for all, for all.
And their schedules are adjusted as necessary.
And that's the same for PSAT, SAT, AP, ACT, um, all of that's done in their, in their home high school. Fairlead Academy done onsite, Virtual Academy coordinated depending upon the assessment and when it's delivered.
Does it just be kind of nice to see, I mean, I know that's more work, but you know how they're progressing compared to the, um, regular classroom environment, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Um, that's good to know.
Yeah.
So when, I think the only thing that I'm, I'm just sharing this of my concern as I was reviewing, um, the school tests, the assessments, or the surveys.
Yeah.
Is, I think the thing that I really concerns me the most was with the student and the parent, I mean, I'm sorry, the teacher survey, um, was the, the ones that were kind of like the lowest, which really is concerning because I think that it causes children to maybe not learn. Um, not properly, that's not the word that I want, but the environment causes them not to maybe be more fearful and then their brains aren't working as well to be able to, uh, you know, comprehend, you know, because I know when I started, believe it or not, when I was campaigning for this, I couldn't even talk. Like, I would start talking and my, my brain would shut down. I was that fearful.
Yeah.
So, I, environment has a lot to do with children's learning and I noticed that, like, the bullying, the, uh, the physical safety.
Yeah.
And the other one that really sat in me were the student to student relationships. So, I don't know, I just kind of want to bring it to everyone's attention because I think that these dynamics really influence how children learn. And I think they could excel more and with that being so low.
Right.
I just, I don't know, I just wanted to throw that out there and, um.
And I will tell you, so the, you're specifically referencing the MSDE student survey that, that's given to every single child in the state of Maryland. So that, so we, we have a lot of comparative data there as well. So what we look for is like whether we're an outlier with our neighbors across the entire state, we look at state averages. We are, of all the things that you've talked about, we are most concerned about the student to student relationships. Because that is, that is the lowest, that's, that's, that's low across all of our secondary schools. And my Slack partner over there, that has been one of our greatest conversations about, about, um, how, how students interact with other students. It's funny because we have high marks for student staff interaction. And the thing is, like, what can we, what can we, what can we personally control? I can control what I do. And by proxy, I can, I can influence what the adults do because we're, because they're our employees. So we can give them training, we can make sure they have the resources, we can work on that. So, the fact that the student staff data is good, meaning that students feel comfortable going to a staff member and, and sharing with a staff member and being supported by a staff member, but their own relationships are lower, that's, that's super difficult work for us. Because if you look back to when you were in high school or when I was in high school, I mean, I can't imagine a teacher ever being like involved in how well I got along with my peers. That wasn't something. What we've seen over the last five years before the pandemic and into the pandemic is this, is this lack of, um, appreciation for others, um, for, uh, not tolerance, because we can be tolerant, but like the actual accepting of one another and to the greatest, and where we try to go is celebrating each other for their differences, for their strengths, even celebrating them for some of their weaknesses and recognizing their work on them. Slack, all of our student groups, all the social emotional learning that we do, all the conscious discipline, all the morning meetings, all the community gatherings that we've heard about, all of the work that we're doing as a school system to try to help students be able to feel comfortable and confident and advocate for themselves, this is all social emotional learning. And it used to be what parents did. It used to be that, and, and many parents absolutely still do this and they're deeply engaged with their children and they're making sure that their children can interact with other children, that their children know how to approach an adult and, and how to respectfully interact in, in situations. We're doing more and more and more and more of that work across, across St. Mary's County, across Maryland, across the, the United States. Because it seems that we are losing social skills as we retreat behind screens and we work from home and we virtually interact and we have social media that's not truly social media. Um, you are so right to bring this forward as a concern, it is our concern. I, I will encourage you and we'll have to figure out a way to get you in with our Slack kids. So you can hear the high school kids from Chopticon Grape Mills, Leonard Town and the Fairlead Academy because we really, we really are talking about that. And ultimately, Ms. Kibler, before we're done, we're going to go into middle schools and that's, middle schools that, that absolutely needs to be the conversation because that is our most trying time of an adolescent's life is learning how to see all the other people in the room and recognize that, that, you know, empathy is, is a, is a prerequisite for, for success in life. I will tell you that when we get them all in and we work them and we mediate them, they're great and then as soon as they're kind of on their own, you know, they kind of slip away. The majority of problems that we are, that we are addressing in, in schools during the day are more often than not problems that originated outside the school, the evening before, on social media, over the weekend, in the, in the park, in whatever. And we see it from small things that, that, with hurt feelings, all the way up to the settling of scores in a school. You are, you are right on one of our largest challenges and, and it's, it's a challenge that I don't think the school system can solve independently. It's something that we have to bring everybody, everybody in, in on, you know. Um, and the first is making sure that your kids are here every day. Because if they're here every day, especially when they're little, our little learners, if they're here every day, they are going to get things like morning meetings and in morning meetings, they go all the way around and every child talks and interacts and says hello and, and it. and, and it kind of reinforces the importance of, of, of talking to others. They have community gathering where they all get together, and it's, and it's just a celebration of all the kids and all their accomplishments, everything from things that they've done to simple things like their birthday. And every one of our fifth grade kids talked about like the, the value of that. But if your, your child isn't going to school and you're keeping them home, and they're not part of that, I don't know how to recreate it. I don't know how to recreate the importance of being in a room with twenty other individuals in the morning and interacting with all of them. I don't know how to recreate being in a gymnasium with a hundred and fifty to two hundred others and, and learning how to interact with them like that.
They're not getting socialized, because you can't get that through the screen.
Yeah, you, 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 you can't, and it's.
Well, everyone has to find their people, right? Especially in middle and high school.
Right.
So, you just, you, you have to find the people that either whether it is, you know, through an extracurricular activity, whether through it's a sport, and it's the kids that aren't finding that and that aren't involved that sometimes might have more of an issue, you know, with that. And some of that is a barrier because they don't have parents that can pick them up or drop them off after school for practices, or, you know, rehearsals or anything like that, so.
And it's also the longer you stay isolated, the more difficult it is to step forward and participate.
Right, and that's why I think One Lunch was a great, was a, was a fabulous change within the school system because now some of those clubs and organizations are meeting during One Lunch, right? And, and probably the reason that our, you know, especially in the high schools, that our, our teacher-student, you know, relationship is so high is because, how many teachers open their doors for those students? I mean, my son's taking in papa noodles, you know, I mean, you know, they have a whole group and, you know, they are interacting with teachers that they don't even have for class.
I didn't see you, Lily, and yesterday I was at Leonardtown High School.
I'm waiting to you.
I was, I was, were you in the, were you in the karaoke?
Yes, I was in the karaoke. I wasn't performing karaoke, but I was enjoying the show across, I mean, I don't know if you saw me, but, yeah.
I'm so sorry, I didn't see.
I was enjoying my one lunch, absolutely.
Yeah, one lunch at Leonardtown High School.
Yes.
They do, you can go eat your lunch, and then they have karaoke.
Yes, it's a special competition.
In a competition in the, in, you know, in the, in the auditorium. Yeah, these kids, these kids got up and they.
Banged their hearts out.
They sang their hearts out! And everybody else was there and supporting them, and they had their, they had their, you know, their flashlights doing whatever as they were singing, you know, um, I, I guess.
Sweet Caroline. Yeah.
It was, I mean, it's, it was great. I didn't get to go down to see the, uh, the auditions for, uh.
The talent show?
The talent show. But, um, yeah, I, and again, I, I wanna, and I tried to bring this back last time. I wanna stress, there are so many really wonderful and neat things going on in schools, and we get so distracted in all these other things. None of this is in the blueprint, by the way. Nobody's giving us funding for karaoke, okay?
That's entirely student and teacher, um, like, that's what they, that's what they do, yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, it was, it was awesome. The young lady who sang, uh, the Footloose, I mean, she killed it!
Yes.
It was great!
And she had everyone singing and dancing.
Everyone was singing along, it was awesome.
She ended up winning.
Did she end up winning?
She ended up winning.
Well, she should have, she, she, she put herself into it, it was great.
Yeah.
So, I, you know. I know, I know Mrs. Bailey, rainbows and unicorns down here. But like, that's the stuff that carry, you know, that's the stuff that carries us through.
I think that's good, you're, you're just, you were, you were real happy earlier about, you know.
Just saying. I left Leonardtown, I was, it was, it, it brought me, brought me right up, there, there was great stuff.
All right, so, we kind of fell down a rabbit hole here. Anyone have any budget questions?
Sorry, it's a good, it's a good question, it's a good comment, and it is, it is at the cor, it is at the center of our work.
Okay, so then I think if no one has anything else, Mrs. McCourt cleared up the questions with the, with the charter school that everyone had. So, um, you can see all the specific changes that the, that the.
Yes, so you have the three documents in front of you of all the changes that have been made since we've provided you the budget binder. The first document was the revenue changes, the second document are the expenditure changes because we're still going through and refining, and we'll continue to go through and refine. And then the third document are some FTE changes by category.
And, and what will come before you next week will be, uh, the whole cleaned up.
Formal budget document that will actually be going across the street to the county commissioners as well as their ECCs, and then they have a separate budget template that we've adhered to over the years because that supports the level of transparency and the partnership that we have with the county government.
And I want to thank you, Mrs. McCourt, and your team, and the superintendent for bringing forth these changes to meet the needs of the students in our school system, the county commissioners, and our citizens, while trying to meet the needs of our system to make us a even better school system than what we are. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, is that, we are adjourned, ten fifteen?